I also had the opportunity to, to uh extol your virtues today, Gary. I've told somebody about that. Well, y'all, y'all wanna hear, since we got nothing else to do, you wanna hear a good story about Gary?
Oh, wait, whoa, whoa.
Oh, how can we mute you?
This actually is a good story about Gary. When I was a middle schooler.
Y'all are live.
Ah.
You are live.
Bummer.
Gary.
Man.
How much for that?
Keep that to yourself.
Oh, that's the word.
Alright. We'll consider ourselves called to order for the May meeting of the Calvert City Planning Commission. The time is five fifty. And first item of business will be the approval of the minutes from our April nineteenth meeting. You have those either in your packet or in your hands. What's your pleasure of the question?
I read the minutes and.
Motion by Gary, second by Ben. Ever say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Alright. Alright. Uh, John, I don't know if there'll be any old business, your new business, you wanna lead us into that?
Uh, yeah, we need some clarification. Um. With us tonight is Willie Kearns on Smart Path and also with our, of course, Board of Adjustment and also Mr. Tyler R. Daniel. They're looking at a private or business to occupy the old Smart Path over on Ash. So if you all, Willie, if you would, I'll let you talk to them about it. And I'll tell you what we're, what we think we'd come up with and see if we all agree.
Okay, and I, I think Tyler's on here, so I'll kind of let him explain the concept, but you know, I've got that building at seventy-eight Ash Street, which is about forty-five hundred square foot of very nice space and Tyler, you know, Tyler can get into what exactly he's doing, but he has a need for it. And as John said, I think there, we need some clarification about things like dormitories versus multifamily housing and that kinda thing. But Tyler, do you wanna kinda explain to him what you're doing?
Yeah, alright, so. Yeah, the exact same thing happened last time I did this. Alright, so yeah, thank you guys for listening to me. So, um, I know at, it's on the surface, that can sound like a crazy idea, what we're trying to do, but it's actually something really cool, um, that I'm trying to bring to this area. So what it is, in a nutshell, is I'm trying to start a post-grad academy, which is essentially an opportunity for kids that graduate high school, um, and they don't have a scholarship offer that they want, or they were overlooked, um, throughout the recruiting process, or maybe they had a scholarship and it was pulled, um, because of COVID, which is definitely a thing going on right now because rosters are super overloaded. So this gives them an opportunity to come back to the area, um, and basically train for eight months out of the year. Um, and then we, I'm bringing coaches in and then we take them, play at Murray State, we play at CMO, we play at Ren Lake College, John A. Logan, Southeastern Illinois, um, we take them and get them in front of these, these schools and we actually play their team. Um, and it gets them experience, it gets them exposure, um, and it gets them a year, pretty much a year bigger, faster, stronger. Um, and yeah, so I'm just trying to bring that back to our community. Um, you know, this is something, we moved back in July. I know I've talked to a few people in here about this already, but we moved back here in July and kinda my whole goal with this is just to reignite the baseball community within this area. You know, a lot of our kids are going to Paducah to watch the Paducah Chiefs play, they're going to Fulton to watch the Railroaders play, and this is the first step, um, in getting something like this back in our area. Um, and again, it gives these kids that, you know, otherwise wouldn't have an opportunity to play in college, or, you know, had an opportunity and it was taken away, it gives them kind of a second chance to come in. So where me and Willie have been talking, um, we need to house about thirty people for those eight months. And you know, this isn't something where it's, you know, you're gonna have to worry about partying and things like that. We're not cutting them loose. We're not putting thirty, uh, you know, eighteen, nineteen-year-old kids in a building and just saying, hey, please stay out of trouble. Um, we're actually gonna have the, whoever the head coach is, is gonna have two assistants. One of the assistant housing, one of the packages is gonna be free housing, so he will actually stay in the facility with them. Um, that way we have, you know, I guess kinda like parental guidance, um, in the building. And you know, just kinda to keep everything under control. But one thing to remember with all this is, you know, these kids are looking to play at the next level. They're not kids that were kicked out for drug problems. They're just, they're literally kids that are looking for another opportunity, um, and somebody to give them a chance, and that's what I'm trying to do. So, um, I, I think the best thing is, you know, you guys ask me questions, that's kinda the gist. Um, you know, the other piece that I'll throw this out, you know, I'm doing lessons in, in Calver, and I'm sure, um, most of you guys have, have either seen that or heard that. And when I bring these kids in, that's gonna give, um, that, it's gonna be bringing in that many more people, um, to impact our kids. So that's the idea. Um, so yeah, you guys ask away, I'm open.
So Tyler, I, I assume the end of Willie's building, you're gonna turn, wanna turn that into their living quarter? So it'll be dormitory, sleeping area, common area, kitchen facilities and so forth, all that, shower room?
Yes, sir. Yep, they would, they would need, they would have residents there for eight months.
Hey Willie, go ahead. So, well, I was just gonna ask about, I mean, is it a potential where each one of these kids is gonna have vehicles? So like thirty vehicles at that facility and maybe what that looks like?
Yeah, so, um, Willie, you can chime in too, cuz I know we had kinda talked about that already, but, um, I would assume that about ninety of the, ninety percent of those kids are gonna have a vehicle of some sort. Now, some of them have already said, Coach, do I have to have a car? And the answer is no, cuz you're in Calvert City. I mean, you can literally walk to Food Giant if, you know, if you need to, plus there's gonna be other people with vehicles there that they could catch a ride with. Um, so, you know, without giving concrete numbers, I would say about ninety percent of those kids, um, you know, I, I would think we would need to, to plan accordingly, you know?
And, and what I can tell you guys, and I'm gonna go over there this evening after we get off of this meeting and count, but I believe that I have right now marked, and I still have some parking to stop, but I believe that I actually have thirty-two spaces.
Thirty-two?
Did you say thirty-two, Willie?
Three, two.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, for your information, and you have in front of you, and I'm sorry folks, online that you don't have that, but the definition for group family household dwelling, as per section three of the Calvert City zoning, zoning ordinance, defines that as a dwelling consisting of a dormitory-type housing of three or intended to be occupied by multiple families or unrelated individuals for purpose and subject to common services such as meals, personal assistance, counseling and the like. So. I'm not sure if you consider that being.
Yeah, I think one of my questions when I.
I think that's, yeah.
It sounds exactly what you're doing, yeah.
Yeah, and where I had approached John was, I did, I, I was looking in the, in the zoning ordinance at multifamily housing, and I didn't see the dormitory option, and I had approached him originally and said, is this multifamily housing? But I agreed that it sounded more to me like you all were saying, like dormitory living.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what we're talking about. One thing, the one thing I was a little concerned about was the parking. And Willie talked about that earlier, to make sure they had enough parking. We don't have anything that really addresses. If you go by a housing, the definitions, each room would have to have homes, it would be, you know.
Dwelling, it's under dwelling.
Dwelling, one and a half per bedroom. Well, a bedroom and a dorm can, you know, you know, it might be two people, it might be sixteen. I lived in open bases in the military that, you know, you had eighty people in there, so.
But, that's what I already say.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's, then we don't, we don't have any parking that dog, I would think. But it sounds like, either way it goes, though, if they've got thirty-six spaces, they've got sufficient probably for the people there.
So what's, what's on your mind?
And guys, I am gonna go over there and clarify that in a little while.
But I mean, the, the dormitory type would be the, is a B-two zone that it's in, so that would.
Well, the, we're, yeah, we're willing, where Smart Path is, is a B-two zone. Okay, alright, so that would be the zone that we're in, and it's, uh, this group household family, that's for B-two, is it conditionally used? Well, anywhere it's allowed is conditionally used, but it's allowed B-one, B-two as conditionally used. And I just wondered, do you wanna set the parking based on the conditional use that they find? Or is that something that you all wanna address, uh, as far as, uh, I don't know, that purpose here? Cuz I mean, it could, you can think of various ways. I'm not sure if we can sit down and figure out an individual.
Right.
Definition would fit for all that, of different types.
It would depend on the type of group home.
Exactly.
Because in this case, it would be able-bodied adults, you know, if it were a special needs group home, it would be, it wouldn't necessarily have parks.
That's correct.
Well, this, does this qualify, will the neighbors be contacted? I'm not sure. I'm just expressing my concern about the neighbors and the church that's right there. So what's, what's the thoughts on that?
On a conditional use, any, um, any adjoining neighbors, church across the street would not be notified because it's across the street. But anybody that physically touches it, would get a letter and it would go in the newspaper.
And I believe.
John, would there be a public hearing?
Yes, absolutely.
So then on that public hearing, I mean, yeah, the two adjacent property owners would get notification, but I mean, essentially, if the church wanted to send, send representatives to express whatever they could as well, right?
That's correct, they could.
Okay, okay.
And a public hearing, that's open to anybody that wants to make.
Anybody.
Yes.
Sure.
So I guess first I ask is, do you feel that that meets the definition of a family or group family household dwelling?
I think, I think that's about as close to nailing that description as it, that you get, so.
Yes.
And then as such, I mean, it says in here, I mean, the very last thing on, on parking, all other uses not listed herein. Um, again, based on the study, to be prepared by the owner or operator, the number of spaces to be required will be determined by the commission after considering the type of use made in parking duration per vehicle trip. I don't know if that's something that, Greg, you may wanna weigh in, is that something that we can still give to the Board of Adjustments to make a decision on in this case? Or?
You mean in the context of a conditional use permit, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, for parking purposes, cuz we really don't everything it address.
Yeah, if, it's, it's not a, you know, it's not a new and unlisted use, but, uh, does the park, tell me what the parking ordinance says specifically about, about how you, what, how does it address this at all?
The only way I see under dwelling, there is a dwelling, two-family and multiple-family, and then that's when it says one and a half per bedroom.
Okay, so. Yeah, so that's a different, it, it doesn't technically address it.
That's correct.
This is not either one of those.
That's correct.
But if you go back to what we're, our definition, we've got dwelling group family household, it's the same as dwelling multiple family.
No, cuz we have a multiple-family dwelling as well as a group family dwelling.
Oh, there's two different uses.
Okay, in the, you know, in the, okay. So a multiple-family dwelling is also a, a use as is a group family household.
From this group family.
Oh, that is correct, those are two different uses. I think, let's see, if you look on the last page of that one, you'll see it, yeah.
So the bottom line is, we've, we've just got a situation that's not addressed.
That's correct.
So what we, I mean, honestly, what we probably would do is treat it like a new and unlisted use. Just ask the, just come back to these, come back to you guys and ask you how you wanna do it, how you wanna treat it. Like we would if it were a new and unlisted use.
And one thing, guys, that I may add there a little bit, and I don't know how this impacts, and Tyler, you may speak to this. I think Tyler's kind of on a tight timeline, so that's why we wanted to see, you know, the conditional use as soon as possible. I think he has people coming in like in August, if possible. So that's where I just, you know, meeting after meeting, I was a little concerned about.
Right.
Because I'm not sure when the, the next time the Board of Adjustments meets, then we know we'll have to do, he'll have to do that one. So you know, we have to allow time for that hearing.
And I think, I don't see any reason we can't do the parking tonight.
Yeah, does the parking, at the, John, is there, I'm sorry, but I don't have an ordinance in front of me.
He read it, he'll read it again if you'll be quiet.
Okay.
Okay, all other uses not listed herein. Based on a study to be prepared by the owner or operator, the number of spaces to be required will be determined by the commission after considering the type of use, an estimated number of trips generated during peak conditions inbound and outbound, and B, estimated parking duration during or per vehicle trip, turnover rates.
There you go.
This is, this kind forgive me if I'm wrong, or straighten me out if I'm wrong, but these are gonna, they're gonna have a set number of individuals, okay? They're gonna come in. I think that number, maybe you may wanna set that, or the conditional use may set that as a max, the work of that, um. But it's it quite as a hotel, and you can't look at it quite as a, a, a hospital because, you know, these, these are young men, in today's society, almost everybody, not completely, but almost everybody has a bed. So I really think this in particular will be based on the number of beds that they're gonna have and the, the standard occupancy of this, you know, and if it changes, does that, that would necessarily have, that might change the numbers. You know, or we may just put a maximum occupancy on something like that.
And you. Tyler, Tyler or Willie, you mentioned Tyler, I think thirty is about what, what you're looking at. Is, is that what you see as the maximum you can house in that, in that, in that building?
Well, we were actually about, we were gonna go over there and look again. Um, that, that was a reasonable number, um, based off of what me and Willie were kinda going back and forth. His number right now would actually be much higher than that. Um, but I'll tell you right now, the roster size would never be more than thirty-five, and that's including local kids who are commuting. So like right now, I've got, I've got kids from Trigg County and, and, you know, local places that will be commuting. So when I say roster size, that's total. Um, and you know, I'm anticipating thirty of those thirty-five being kids from all over the country and really worldwide.
Okay. Cuz what, what I, you know, what I'm getting at is, I don't want us to handcuff you any more than we have to, you know? But, I mean, they're, they'll have to, you, you are somewhat limited, I think, by the parking. And we're gonna have to, we'll, we'll have to recognize that, and that may determine what your maximum is, and so. But if we were to say, even the conditional use permit, that, that, that there's housing for thirty people there, and if there's thirty-two parking spaces, that should be sufficient for the thirty cars and then the transient folks that might be around with that too. But I, you know, how, how much does that handicap you if it, if it were, if they have to do something like that and limit you to thirty people?
Well, I will tell you this, as far as people outside of the, the name of the teams, the Lake Area Rattlers, outside of the players on the Rattlers, there's not gonna be anybody in that building unless.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, so I mean, that is literally their housing facility, they're not gonna be having, you know, people over. Um, and that's gonna be one of the stipulations that I put on the, with the coach, is it's like, look, this is their, this is their space. This is not, you know, a common dwelling for everybody in Marshall County. Like it's, it's literally where, you know, it's for them and that's it. I mean, no, is that to say nobody will ever come over there? Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna go over there every once in a while and check on them, and you know, Willie may wanna come check on his building. Uh, but you know, other than that, there's not gonna be a whole lot of traffic in and out, outside of the players.
So there, will it be get, I mean, you're gonna say there's not gonna be girlfriends and, uh, parents and lots of coming in, I'm thinking of lots of coming and going in that, and lots of traffic on that.
So the answer to the, yeah, girlfriends, no, that's, I'm telling you right now, that's not gonna, they did it at UK, we're gonna do it in Calvert City. That's just how it is. UK basketball players can't have girlfriends in dorms, neither can they. Um, but no, parents, I would assume that when parents come in to visit, which they will, they're not gonna wanna stay in there with twenty-eight other people, you know, or twenty-nine other people. They're gonna come and get them, and they're gonna go and eat or whatever. Um, but yeah, I mean, so there will be some traffic in and out, but it won't be much, I wouldn't assume.
So, so what would a day in the life of one of these, of this group of thirty be? And are they all gonna get in their car every morning and head out and then all come back in the dark at night? That's the plan?
So that, I did hear that, um, as far as like peak hours and things like that. So kinda the day in the life of them is they're gonna lift in the mornings, anywhere from usually about six o'clock. Um, that, and that timeframe is kinda dependent upon the guy that's gonna be training them. Um, that's, it's gonna be Tristan Prangy in Drafenville, but, um, so about six o'clock in the morning, they'll lift, and then they will prac, they'll come back, and then they will practice around eleven to one. It's kinda the timeframe that we're anticipating. Um, and then they have the rest of the day to do classwork, because these kids will be going to, going to school online. Um, so, you know, we've gotta allocate time for them to actually do their classwork. But yeah, outside, I mean, their, their obligated, um, destinations would be, um, lifting and then practice, and then outside of that, that's pretty much it.
How are you feeding them?
It, it'll be up to them. So we'll have a kitchen in the, in the facility, and then they'll go to the grocery store, they'll buy their own groceries. Um, I mean, it's, it'll be just like, honestly, it's, it'll be just how it was whenever I was in college. You go and you buy chicken and you cook it, or ramen noodles or whatever, and you cook it.
So no staff?
No. No, sir.
Willie, did you know, have you talked with, uh, the code enforcement officials to, and I talked about, I'm talking about the ones in Marshall County, that would determine whether or not the, what the occupancy would be in that building?
Yeah, I have, I have, although not recently with, with Tyler, I did probably about a year and a half ago. And like I said, that's a forty-five hundred square foot building, and you all remember it from when it was the doctor's office, probably. Um, and really effectively, if you, like I have a floor plan that I drew out, I think effectively, if you're looking at bunk beds, you could probably fit close to twenty-four bunk beds in there without people being like crowded or whatever the case may be. And so, you know, I think that that alone satisfies the number of people in terms of like layout of room, but no, code enforcement's something we'll have to get a hold of.
Okay.
So John, did I understand correctly that, uh, Willie or, or Tyler or somebody is gonna need to get what, whatever kind of professional is required by the ordinance to figure out how many parking spaces they need? Is that, did I, did I understand that? Is, is that what you read?
It doesn't really say it's professional, it just says, based on a study to be prepared by the owner or operator.
And I, John, I may be incorrect, but I think that at one point in time, and maybe with one of my other buildings, you actually gave me the requirements of a parking space.
Yeah, some of them are already pre-listed, and so those are available. And now if you were doing just a standard group home where you had a room that had one or two people in it, then you're gonna utilize, you know, something like that. But when you're talking about a dormitory, it's a little bit different, because one room may not, like I said, may not house two people or four, it may house sixteen or, or twenty, depending on the size of the room and what you can, what you can fit in there. I think the biggest thing is determining for you guys is, is to determine and make sure that the county signs off on the number of people you think needs, can go in there. And at that point, I think that is gonna be something we'll need to know to help determine parking based on that.
Okay, I'll work on that tomorrow and get with the county.
Cuz I think that'll actually help narrow it down for everybody, is, is knowing what is acceptable for that and what we need to prepare for here, or think about here.
And so I guess then, guys, my question for, we all, we're really, for Tyler is, so if I do that, I'll, you know, I'll get ahold of the county. I guess then come back to you all, then he's gonna have to do a conditional use permit. Will that fit in his timeline before August?
The biggest thing would be getting in, uh, the change, I guess change on the ordinance, would it Greg? That'd take the most time.
Well, does the ordinance have to be amended? That didn't sound to me like there was an ordinance required. Am I wrong?
Why did that just be part of the condition?
Okay, well, I was just wondering if it did or not, if you were gonna put it in there, or if you're just gonna make that study just for this one?
I, I think you do it for.
Is that what you're saying, it's just for this one?
Yeah.
What it sounded to me like.
On what we come up with.
Yeah, cuz the, you know, again, if, if someone else had a building and wanted to a dormitory, it may be a different spare footage, so therefore, it, this wouldn't work. Yeah, this would need to be, that would need to be incorporated, to me, it would be incorporated in part of the conditional use.
Okay, that's what we're looking at.
This building is defined to be a maximum occupancy of X and therefore X plus.
Sure.
Two.
Yeah, okay, alright, I'm.
I'm in. Okay, then yeah, it would be just basically determining what the occupancy is, and then they make the determination on the, on that for that particular building.
So under those circumstances, we wouldn't have to have an ordinance, so you're not gonna have that.
Right, right, yeah, right. So then we'd be, once we get that established, they'll know what to do to move forward with this conditional use of zoning app. Okay. So that's your question, Willie? Yeah, the faster you can give us the information so they can make a determination, the quicker we can start Tyler down the road on his other applications.
We should, we should theoretically be able to do it at June's regular meeting and promote.
Yeah, yeah.
For zoning and then can follow it up with the.
Yeah, well, no, cuz it's, it's going, the public hearing is gonna take two weeks, notice, notification, cuz it's next to a residential zone. If I'm not mistaken, if it's next to a residential zone, you gotta have two weeks, no, can't go with a week, you have to have two weeks.
And hey, John?
Yes, sir.
Does there have to be, I believe that, and correct me if I'm wrong, or Greg, I think that there has to be a buffer since it joins a residential zone? Is that?
Residential zone, not a residence.
Okay.
So if the one behind, the house beside you is in a commercial zone like you are, there's no buffer necessarily, unless the conditional use requires it. Now, if you were in, next door to you was a residential zone specifically, yes, you would have to have a, a buffer, then the conditional use, as you've known, would require that and the type.
Got it.
But that whole block is B-two?
I, I can't make that call without actually looking.
Yeah.
But I think, I think it's probably correct.
Yeah.
And, and really, you know, the back neighbor's Mr. Harrington, and then Bo owns the.
What it is.
Yeah, I think we came off.
Yeah, came off. I, I believe you, that whole block is, uh, I know, so B in a commercial district.
Cool, awesome.
I mean, if you thought the, if you wanna be nice to your next-door neighbor and put a fence in, I mean, that's your call. No answer on that one, huh?
Tyler's relatives.
So just to summarize, guys, and make sure I got it, I will get ahold of the county tomorrow, see what inspector says, you know, that building can hold the number of residents, that kinda thing. I will get you all that information and we'll get you the accurate number of parking spaces. Is that, is that what we need?
Well, you get us the number of occupants and we can go from there on the park.
Got it. Got it.
Because that's what we'll make the determination on.
Okay, I'll start working on that in the morning.
Great. And then, poor Tyler, you said that ninety percent you thought would be driving, correct?
Yeah, and I, yeah, I think, like you said, I mean, they're eighteen nineteen year old boys, I would assume that majority of them are gonna have cars.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yes, sir.
I think we've got a game plan.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it greatly, I appreciate you all helping us out.
But thank you, Willie, thank you, Tyler.
Thank you, guys, for hearing us, I appreciate it.
One last thing, new business. Everybody on both the planning commission and on the board of adjustments has been registered for training in June. You should have received or should receive an email, should have already received an email on a cure. You did, did you get one?
Yeah.
Take your email, it's sealed by us, that's where it went, should have. It's a confirmation of, Cassie, you and Brad both should have received one, did you?
I don't, I haven't seen it yet, but I can comb through my emails and make sure, if I don't, I'll let you know.
I'll have to look back through mine, too.
It'll be no reply at KLC.org.
Yeah.
No reply at KLC.org.
Okay, I think I saw that and did not open it.
Okay, that is your, that is your registration. I changed it up this year so that you all got confirmation directly to you. That way you can have the information.
Are we all going the same day?
Yeah.
It's a Wednesday night at eight thirty.
Yeah, Willie, Willie's gone, well, Willie and Andy and Jim also got that, so.
Oh, Andy's gonna be there too, Andy Gary, oh, man.
Please, I will, I understand, they are, you have to keep them separate.
He sat next to me last night, I couldn't.
And then Crystal and I both will also, so. So, yeah, I've got everybody registered, and if you cannot make it, please let me know, so I can cancel it, because they'll, we'll get a credit if you can't make it, okay?
What is the date on it again?
June ninth. Eight thirty to five. And everybody is due, or past due, everybody needs to be there if they can.
Ben's driving, Kathy, so we're good.
Yeah, Kathy, he can ride with me.
Okay.
You and Andy's Cadillac will all go in.
That's all I have, sir. All right, if anyone has questions. Any other questions, comments? We have motion to adjourn.
Make motion.
Have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Brad said second, all in favor, say aye or wave. Meeting adjourned at six twenty-two. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, guys.
See you later.